So I'd like to open the four o'clock work session agenda for Planning Board for December 19th. And first up will be, well, first, this is being recorded and/or sent out live. The Planning Board will consider amendments to the following sections of the Westport zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations. One of those, one. No, that's correct, okay. Zoning bylaw, section 9.8, bed and breakfast. Amend section 9.8 to include regulations for both short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts. Establish permitting and registration requirements with the Board of Health. B, add a definition for short-term rentals to section three definitions. C, amend the table of use regulations, section 5.1, to allow bed and breakfast and short-term rentals as allowed by right in all zoning districts. So do we want to go through it bit by bit?
Yeah, I have a couple of introductory slides too, just so I can talk about what we're doing here today. So I just want to make clear that this is a work session, this is not a public hearing. So the Planning Board is, this is an opportunity for the Planning Board to have a more general conversation about amendments that would be brought to town meeting next year. They will not be making any formal decisions tonight regarding the short-term rental bylaws. That will be considered in a more official capacity at a public hearing on January 9th at 6:30 in this room. And the subsequent items on this agenda are to be determined when we'll have that public hearing. So our format for this meeting, as I said, the Planning Board will review and discuss the agenda item and we'll have them adjust, discuss the entire agenda item and we'll hold public comment until the end of that agenda item. And we ask, since we have quite a bit to cover here tonight, we ask that the comments are limited to about five minutes and try not to repeat items that have already been addressed by other participants. We do have to vacate this room at 6:45. The Conservation Commission has a meeting afterward. All right, so first up, we'll go over our, the zoning bylaws that came out of the Short-Term Rental Committee. And because we have a short-term, we have a quorum for the Short-Term Rental Committee here tonight to help discuss with the Planning Board, we do need to open the meeting, a meeting for the Short-Term Rental Committee.
Who's the chair?
Well, the chair would be, chair is Roger and then vice chair would be Mark and Jerry is clerk, so Jerry?
Me?
You're clerk.
You're gonna open the meeting.
You're the, you're third in command, so we'll get you to open the meeting.
I was recording. You come by like the recording.
Yeah, you need to officially open your meeting.
Okay, well, I guess we're gonna open a work session of the Planning Board with members of the Short-Term Rental Committee as well. And the meeting is being recorded and video. Any other thing that you want to do? You want to do pledge allegiance?
No.
I'll just note that the Short-Term Rental Committee meeting was opened at 4:18.
Okay.
So to start with this high-level overview of what this bylaw is going to do, is it's going to allow short-term rentals and bed and breakfast by right in the residential agricultural business and Westport Gateway zoning districts. This is a, so this will require an amendment of the table of uses in section 5.1. Then we will need to add a definition of short-term rentals in these definitions sections of the zoning bylaw. And this definition will read, "A short-term rental is a dwelling that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed and breakfast, where at least one room or unit is rented out through the use of advanced reservations not to exceed 31 consecutive days. A short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, and condominium. It does not include property that is rented out through tenancies at will or month-to-month leases. It also does not include timeshare properties or bed and breakfasts." Does the board, either board or the committee have any comments on this slide? Hearing none, we will move to section, line 8.1, the purpose section of the bylaw.
Can I interrupt? I can't hear a word.
Okay, I'll speak up a little bit.
Because I'm hot in here.
Okay. So the purpose of the Bed and Breakfast and Short-Term Rental zoning bylaw is to provide for administration and enforcement of the Westport bed and breakfast and short-term rentals in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of both the occupant of those rental units and the general public, and to maintain quality of life in residential neighborhoods. This bylaw provides for the orderly operation of bed and breakfast and short-term rentals and prevents negative impacts on neighborhood character, housing availability, and house prices. This bylaw assists the Board of Health, Building Department, Police Department, and Fire Department in enforcement of state and local health and safety laws. Do either the board or committee have any comments on this slide? Hearing none, I will continue to section 9.8.2.1, rental permit. First item here is that no person shall operate a bed or breakfast or short-term rental dwelling without first registering with the Board of Health and obtaining a rental permit. The Board of Health shall determine the number of bedrooms in the number of persons dwelling, or portion of a dwelling may lawfully accommodate. The rental permit shall be issued, subject to regulations adopted by the Board of Health at a public hearing. The Board of Health shall pursuant to requirements of section 9.8 and its regulations and fee schedule, issue a rental permit to be renewed annually. Failure of the owner to abide by the requirements of section 9.8 may result in failure to grant or renew a rental permit. Shall be the responsibility of the property owners to ensure full compliance with the Town of Westport zoning bylaws, Westport Board of Health Short-Term Rental Regulation, and any other applicable state and local health and safety laws or regulations. Any comments?
So are we detailing what the requirements will be or in a later section?
The requirements will be detailed in the next section.
Okay.
I have a question. What is the definition of a bedroom?
The definition of a bedroom may be included in the zoning bylaw section. In the definitions section, I don't have that definition on hand right now.
So Michael, this permitting process, I mean, I thought we were looking, we were looking at a special permit to do this? No? So like, okay, so the Board of Health's gonna take the lead on this, not like most licensing, the selectmen have the lead on that, no? I'm just, I'm just concerned that I'm in the Board of Health's role in this. You know, I understand septic-wise, but when we get into the other section of town, it's sort of, I mean, being them to lead on, I mean, I'm just, I'm just.
Well, part of it's the health and safety of the occupants and the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, so there are two parts to that question. I think with having a special permit, a special permit is going to be fairly burdensome on the applicant, on the applicant to get together an engineered site plan, which is a pretty significant expense, given the request to have, you know, just a short-term rental unit in their home. So they would have to have a full, fully engineered and stamped plan in order to bring forth that application to the Planning Board. So the thought was to have the Board of Health administer a permit because it would be similar to review of similar types of uses, like hotels, but, and they already do reviews for bed and breakfast.
I mean, what about the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer?
There would, I would, there would need to be a change of use permit requested. All changes of use have to go through the building inspector.
So what, shouldn't the building inspector be the licensing?
Well, there's, there's additional requirements that would be regulated through the Board of Health.
Well, I can understand that, but I think maybe the lead should be through the building inspector and not the Board of Health.
I guess, to me, I think you need to make this as easy as possible and to be able to sort out the problem spots. And so the question in my thought process is if we're gonna put this on the Board of Health, is the Board of Health ready for this?
Well, I would react to the comment from Mark Schmidt and his thing, his written comments to the board about having a minimal fee schedule. We'll need to have, we do not have enough staff to manage. We were told in the Short-Term Rental Committee meetings from participants that there's probably 400 short-term rentals in town.
So you need to hire somebody to be able to manage this. But so the fee structure should be set in some way to pay for that.
That we would need support in order to do it. I'd imagine for the initial phase in, it will take, it can't turn around, like if it passes at town meeting, we have to go through a process of developing regulations. And it must, I imagine, we'll figure out some way to phase it in or something because it can't be done.
Can't be done.
Expeditiously.
But every, no matter where we put it, every agency is gonna face that same task.
Right.
And we definitely shouldn't make it a special permit because.
There's not enough time.
It's too arduous, it's costly, it's appealable by, you know, parties. You know, we want to make this an as of right use, subject to an annual permit.
I can agree with that, Mark. So my feeling would that be in, with the Board of Health's duties that they already have, I mean, obviously they can have some duties in this already. I think, I, my feeling is it should stay with the building department. And on, as of last night in one of the meetings that we had, we are looking to fund another building inspector. So, and it was, you know, because we know the building department is overwhelmed already. But you know, now with this, this other thing that we're working through with the permitting online, that the grant that Michael's gotten, I think this is gonna work with the building inspector and it should streamline this for all the other departments underneath the building inspector versus giving another duty. You already have a duty in this short-term rental to make sure that, you know, when you review the building inspector's permit, that they have the adequate. And that's already in your, I don't wanna say lame, but.
So, so maybe I appreciate that there's a move afoot to get some help for the building inspector. But if you got one person, all their time would be eaten up by this. It wouldn't help the building inspector, except for this project. We need to hire two.
So it would be the same thing on the Board of Health?
Right.
You're gonna need to hire.
Yeah, but we're not, they're not looking.
Then we get more help for the building inspector.
They're not looking for them to do anything else. They're looking for them to.
Well, I kind of disagree because it does have to do with more than just public health and safety. I mean, the building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer. I don't think we should pull that off the zoning enforcement officer and give it to the Board of Health. I mean, that's my opinion, and I think if we want to get something passed through town meeting, it's kind of gonna be brought up by people in town meeting on that, they're gonna kind of push back on. I know with this new permitting process, I mean, I think this should streamline the whole building department. And we're, you know, we're also looking on the way how we're gonna fund an engineer for the town. It actually, I kind of brought your name into the picture last night in the selectmen's meeting about how much time you volunteer for the town as an engineer. So we had some pushback that we didn't, don't need an engineer in town. So, well, we're looking for all that. I guess, and I'm not looking to add more work to the Board of Health that they, they're already gonna have in this situation.
My apologies to the board for being late, but I was in the office today working, you know.
No, we do appreciate.
I know people, people look at my gray hair and think I'm retired, but I'm not actually retired. I was actually working full-time when the re, not full-time, but almost full-time. But the, and then I was just hostage to the traffic on 24. But, you know, I, I think this would overwhelm the building inspector. I think this is going in the wrong direction. We already, we already know that he, you know, that department is, is really always in crisis. And, you know, my, my thinking is it sits, it sits well with the Board of Health around the health and safety issues. And whether or not, you know, the streamlined permitting is something that could happen. It definitely won't be, if this passes the town meeting, it has to happen pretty quickly.
I mean, how, what's the, what's the timeline on that, on like?
For town meeting?
No, on the, on the streamline, on the permitting, the grant that we just got to get this up and running.
We will receive funds for that within 45 days from the contract, the date that we signed the contract, which was last week. And so then we have to, and contract out with the seller, vendor, to get it implemented at that point. And we have, we have two years to expand all the funds.
It won't be overnight. Having, having taken several pretty good-sized corporations through changing the computer systems, at best, this is a year.
It'll, it'll take a while.
Again, well, I guess, I don't know, we said more time in the meeting than that. This is just discussions anyway, what's gonna go forward. That's just my concerns.
Okay. Next, we have the, so this is what you were referring to, Jim, the requirements for short-term rentals. This will also include, this includes requirements for both bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. And first up is that no tenant or less, oven, no tenant or less, I think that's supposed to be of a short-term rental or bed and breakfast shall let or sublet a bed and breakfast or short-term rental, no tenants.
Yeah, okay.
The owner shall conform to any requirements of Massachusetts Department of Health and the Department of Public Health and Code Enforcement, adhere to all existing rules, regulations, codes, and other federal Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Town of Westport requirements pertaining to health, safety, health and safety as typically regulated and enforced by the Building Department, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, Planning Board, and/or Board of Selectmen. The owner shall have accommodation for parking per section 8.3. And I have noted up on the screen here that that section is a minimum of one space per guest room in a location normal for residential use and on the premises. That would be in addition to that section. D, the applicant must be current with all town taxes, water, and sewage charges. The next, in the residential agriculture district, the bed and breakfast and short-term rental is granted solely to a private owner who is a resident of Westport, a legal resident of Westport, an LLC in which the majority owner is a resident of Westport, a trust in which a trustee is a legal resident of Westport. The permit shall not be transferable or assigned to another person. The permit for a bed and breakfast or short-term rental does not run with the property. It shall be terminated upon sale or transfer of the property for which the permit has been issued. The owner of the bed and breakfast or short-term rental shall be responsible for adhering to all aspects of section 9.8. The owner shall obtain a certificate of registration with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Revenue, including identification of state and local occupancy taxes. Bed and breakfast and short-term rental owners shall maintain liability insurance appropriate to cover the rental use.
I have one thing that I would like to know whether it should be added or not. I would like to see something in there that requires the owner of the short-term rental or the renter of it, the, the owner certify that all smoke detection and fire detection or CO2 detection devices, that they are there and that they have been checked within the year. And certify that.
So that's something that would be addressed in a Board of Health inspection, I believe.
It's part of the housing code, so, I mean, it could be covered that way if you.
I'd like to see it in the, in the thing, so people who are anticipating doing this know that they have to provide a certificate each time they renew, that they have upgraded the batteries and check them. And not just have it in some state code that you have to follow.
I think the anticipation is that if the, if the Board of Health has responsibility for permitting, all of those would be outlined in either the regulation and/or the application permit, you know, the permit application. But having it in the bylaws, okay too.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't harm, it's just the same.
I just comment on item D. Current with all town taxes, water, and sewer charges. I think I'd like to see where it's financial obligations to the town because it could be other fees and, you know, whatever, it could be there. And I think you could wrap it up with something like financial obligations to the town because it says to be current with, so it wouldn't be anything over the future.
Would you suggest that it would read as the applicant must be current with all town financial obligations?
Yeah, something along that line. And if you want to say including, you know, that's fine too.
You could say including taxes, fees, water, and sewer charges.
I also want to just caution us on this transferability. Permit shall not be transferable or assigned. And that, I think from a legal point of view, would, would be affected if, if we did make this special permit. Because I guess, special permit with capital S and P versus small s and p, but a special permit through the zoning board or whatever is, runs with the property as well, is not personal. We've had that issue come up a couple times, we've had to reverse some, some decisions that were made by prior boards. So all I'm saying is if we do decide to look at a special permit, I think we just need to look and make sure with our legal authority that, that we can have that non-transferability in there.
Yes. This, so just so everyone knows, this hasn't been reviewed by town council yet, so if there are any of those issues that come up, they'll, I'm sure they'll let us know.
So I'd like to ask you about the requirements in E. A private owner who is a resident of Westport, a legal resident of Westport. Say somebody has spent six months and a day in Florida and five months less a day, six months less a day in Massachusetts, Westport. Are they a legal resident?
This is a section, and so I would hope that especially the Planning Board members would discuss this a little bit further, just because this was an item that was fairly con, these items were fairly controversial during the Short-Term Rental Committee meetings. And it does lend itself to a lot of questions like that.
I think this will eliminate 200 of the 400.
Right.
Airbnbs here.
Right.
Because a lot of people live in Florida as their legal voting residents for tax purposes and live here six months of the year, less a day.
So I think.
And so that would, this would cut them out completely.
You're correct, yeah. As this is written, that's, that would be the effect of it.
I don't think we want to do that. I mean, in all but a legal sense, they are legal, they are citizens of Westport, so.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I don't, I don't think that we should require them to be a legal resident of Westport at all because I, I just don't think that's reality.
Right.
What actually happens. So I know that's been discussion, controversy, but I just don't think it's gonna fly. And if we, if we did, I'd want to make sure that we're consistent in the way we say these two as well.
Can I add something to this discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been renting and doing rentals in Westport for over 40 years, my family over 80 years.
Could you identify yourself and give us?
Virginia Buchanan.
And your address? What is your address?
My official address.
Your address? I don't know, whatever you want.
Well, it's the legal one, 19 Bridges and Avenue, Attleboro.
Yeah.
I spent six months, pretty much, May to October in Westport, the rest of the time in Attleboro. I'm always a resident when there are renters. We have rules, and I may have enforced them. And over 80 years of rental through the family, I don't believe we've ever had a police problem, except when they come to sell their ball tickets and the rentals live by them. It's just, I don't think you have to be a resident, but you have to be available. And I think that can be worded differently.
Yes, I believe we actually covered that in one of our discussions, that if we chose not to do the legal resident, we would, that they have to have a local contact, however you word that, that's available, you know, right away.
I don't think Mark Schmidt had some wording that reflected that as well.
So I think that section needs some work. And it's hard to prove who's the majority owner in an LLC or a corporation or a trust because the trust can have many beneficial owners. A trustee is a legal resident.
Well, Mark did suggest a compromise of having a local contact who is a legal resident. Myself, I don't really see whether they have to be a legal resident of Westport, but that was a compromise that Mark Schmidt put forward.
Yeah, I mean, for instance, in your case.
I mean, I can change my address, but I don't think I should have to. I don't think it's constitutional.
So you're, you're not a legal resident, but you're.
I'm here.
You're doing the right thing, so.
Right.
We need to be able to accommodate that.
In, in the draft that we have now, we have both resident and legal resident and, and it doesn't, we don't distinguish which we, either of those things, I should say.
Maybe we just say something to the effect that there must be a, a responsible entity, a responsible local entity that can be contacted.
Yeah, I think it should be 24-hour-a-day contact, contactability. But, you know, we have to work on the actual wording of that, but I think that the concept is a local representative. is a local representative who is responsible and responsive, I believe, would take care of the issue.
So there is a section in the short-term rental requirements, it's 9841 EB, would be a requirement to have a local contact designated to respond to any emergencies or problems that might arise while the unit is being rented. And I, I do agree with some of the conversation here, that having all the multiple categories for ownership does get challenging from an administrative perspective, just because there are lots of hypothetical situations that might not be included.
I think that also would do away with the issues that come about when we're talking about corporate ownership, and we are getting more of that corporate ownership, LLCs and so forth. And if they just have to have a local responsible contact, it kind of does away with being concerned about who's on it. I think it would be a very, very difficult situation to try to stay on top of who's an owner and who isn't an owner, and LLCs and all the things like that. With a more generalized concept of a local responsible contact, I think it kind of does away with all that.
Can you hear him?
Yeah, yes.
This will also be recorded and posted on YouTube as well, so if you are having some trouble hearing it, you'll be able to watch it later.
So during the committee meetings, what was the reasoning behind all these ownerships that had to be Westport?
I think the primary concern was having a local, someone who would be responsible locally.
I think we can say that without.
Yeah, I mean, we could even, even pull the section 9841 EB, pull that from the short-term rental requirements and just make it a general requirement for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals.
Bed and breakfast, the owner is onsite, so it's, I guess.
Maybe redundant, yeah.
I would suggest you use the word representative, not just contact. Contact is kind of loosey-goosey, but you want somebody who's.
Right.
Responsible, accountable.
Responsible, covered, a responsible person. Available.
Yeah, Mark Schmidt did address that, whether a local agent or representative.
The bed and breakfast, now, what agency gives the permit for the bed and breakfast?
Bed and breakfast would be, so which town agency?
Yes.
So it'd be building inspector and then whatever applicable Board of Health requirements there.
The use would be a lot of other buildings. Based on a finding that the Board of Health is okay with the septic system.
Because I think like, even like, like a restaurant, the restaurant, the restaurant gets, gets a business license and then the Board of Health does an inspection.
If bed and breakfast is serving breakfast, there's a cottage kitchen license, that Board of Health would, if that permitting process is in effect currently for bed and breakfast.
Do we have any?
I believe we have a few.
Yeah, I know at least one. Do we have in writing here that the owner has to be physically at the bed and breakfast? I didn't, I don't recall seeing that.
I think, Tonya said the owner is onsite, but I don't think the owner has to be onsite.
That's my point, I don't think.
It could be run by a manager.
That's right, you could have somebody else. Now, there are certain areas where we have in another bylaw where owner has to be onsite, but I don't think it's in there.
Zoning bylaw, at least what I copied, says it's a private owner occupied residence.
Yes.
So I believe you already define it as.
Yeah, but you're talking about a current bylaw?
This is West, Town of Westport zoning bylaws?
Yeah, current.
Correct.
Right, but we're changing that.
I didn't, we're changing definition of bed and breakfast.
Well, I don't know.
Well, it wasn't, that wasn't something that was discussed.
The bed and breakfast section is going to remain unchanged from what was, what is already current in the zoning bylaw, and that includes the definition.
And what you say is a.
Somewhat similar uses, and I think there are some regulations that pertain to both bed and breakfast and short-term rentals, so that was the reason for having a combined section.
Then, then we might run, I think it might be, you know, another suggestion, separate and kind of like the issue that will happen with the.
I don't think that says they have to be there now, I think that.
Is there a reason that you want to even talk about bed and breakfast in this bylaw?
Anything to do with the business.
If it's already in our bylaw?
What's that?
Is there an overriding reason why we want to talk about the bed and breakfast part in this suggested bylaw for short-term rentals, if we already have bed and breakfast covered in the bylaw?
Yeah, we need to, because we had an opinion that it's illegal to run commercial enterprise in the residential district.
So we have to allow it?
We have to, we have to, they exist, we'd like them to exist, and right now we have a legal opinion that says that is a commercial, it's a business operated in a residential district, and it's not allowed, we have to allow it.
Even though, even though the use is defined in our bylaw, in a law, as a use? Is it in the, in the table of use?
It's in the table of use, isn't it?
By right, yes, in the residential.
Yes.
That I don't have off the top of my head, let me check.
Yeah, the reason for the business thing, that had to do with, with the short-term rentals, but, and that was because our bylaw does not cover it. But our bylaw does cover bed and breakfast, so that is legal in the, in whatever district. Because of bylaw, because it's in the bylaw right now.
So this opinion came from, or Town Council?
Yes, it would have come from Town Council, yeah.
Can I say something about that, while, while we're on that subject? It's not right here, but one of the things I think that is sort of missing in most of our discussions, been asked here at these meetings, but general media and people talking is, why are we even bothering with this? Why are we doing this at all? And I think we have to keep reminding that the reason we're doing this isn't because we just suddenly decided we want to do it in a hurry, it was because of one situation that was appealed, and upon the appeal, we had Town Council with us, and Town Council has come back with a, with a decision that none of the short-term rentals are legal. So that means if they, we've got 400, we've got 400 of them that, that are not legal, and so we're trying to deal with that right now, so that we're not attempting to shut them all down or anything like that, which.
Yeah, we want to bring them all to compliance.
Right, we want to make sure that there's compliance, but they got to be in compliance with something. So the something is what we're trying to work on.
Yeah, and not all rentals are short-term rentals. There's a lot of rental, I don't know.
Those aren't regulated here.
Right.
Month, month to month. Month to month and, you know, any, any of that, we're not regulating that. This is something that's, right now it says 31 days, so under 31 days, we regulate it. Has to be more than two days and less than 31.
So that, that includes a lot of people who thought they were just renting out for two weeks at a time, as opposed to short-term rentals. So you're redefining what that means.
That's, we're not, we're not redefining it, we're defining it first of all.
Right. The Town Council has given the opinion that over the 30 days is an accessory allowed use of a property.
Property owners have the right to rent their properties.
Right.
Department of Revenue, room tax collection makes that distinction 31 days or less, you charge that room tax. More than 31 days, you do not.
Right.
So that's where that 31 days came from.
I have, I have sort of a grammar question. In the residential, in that phrase, it says the residential agricultural district, the bed and breakfast and short-term rental is granted, that should be the residential, the rental permit. And I think is is the wrong tense in the regulation, or it's.
May.
Shall be, or maybe. The short-term rental, the, the subject of that phrase should be the permit.
Where exactly are we?
In the phrase mid, sentence down there, it says in a residential agricultural district, the bed and breakfast and short-term rental is granted solely. It's the permit that is granted. The short-term rental permit.
Right.
May be granted, or shall be granted solely, and then, I don't know where we're going to land on all of this, but I would take out legal in front of resident every place. And then later, later on, we can add a phrase that says something about, you know, if you're not here, that there's a legally, what I drafted was, you know, having a legally responsible local representative. So if you have a legally responsible, someone you could call and they're legally responsible for calling the police or, you know. But, but take the legal out of the resident and put it on the representative who has to act.
I have a question. I don't think we addressed it at all, and that is, are we concerned at all about short-term rentals in, let's call them recreational vehicles, you know, something other than a house, because that's happening? And, and we don't, in our regular, our regular housing, we do not allow residential use in a camper or RV or whatever, and we haven't addressed that at this point. So do we just leave them out and let them do whatever they want, or should we address it at all, or just make believe it doesn't happen, or what?
The short-term rental requirement section requires that the short-term rental is in a legal housing unit.
Is what?
In a legal housing unit.
Okay.
So it'd have to be a typical, you know, typical residence, apartment, house.
So what they're doing now is not legal because of what the Town Council says, but they're also not legal because they don't meet our housing standards.
If this were adopted, that would be correct, yeah.
So let me ask this question. Say somebody is renting a dwelling unit 12 months a year, but they go away for two or three months, even though they're paying for it, can they, can they Airbnb it for some of that time?
The owner could.
The owner could, lessees and some lessees.
Lessee can.
And here it says they can't. You know, there was a, there was a lot of discussion in our, in our meetings, in the, in the section in the residential, that phrase in there that, that has the conditions for the LLC and all of that about, you know, and out of, this now says, if you're an out-of-state owner or an out-of-state family, there's no, there's no condition for that. And there was a lot of comment about if someone inherits a house and they live in Connecticut and they, and, or it's, it's, they inherited an interest in an out-of-state trust or something, you know, that, that's not, that's not unusual in older families or the history here. And I didn't know whether or not we, what I suggested, that if that continues to be an issue, then we add a bullet that talks about an out-of-state family or an out-of-state family trust that uses the residence for part of the year and has a legally responsible representative locally, you know, that's a resident of Westport to respond to, and when the family is not in use, that this whole idea of, well, those people are out of luck, I think, if we say you can rent it, you know, let's say they use it in June and September and they rent it for taxes over the summer, that's not unusual. I, I myself rented a home in Salton Point and Dartmouth for years, that was exactly that situation. We rented it for years in August. Essentially, the two women who inherited, inherited the house lived in Philadelphia and they essentially, our rental was the taxes.
Yeah, that happens all the time.
I would suggest that if the Planning Board wants to, you either say nothing, or take out that whole provision and just strengthen the local legally responsible representative language, because adding more provisions to try and cover, well, the imperative, it, I don't, whether it's the Building Department or the Board of Health or the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals who administers this, it's administratively impossible. So I would suggest that you consider removing that provision.
You know, I, I think it's the, whether the owner is a resident or non-resident, the key here is having a local legally responsible local representative.
Yeah, I like the word sponsors too.
I think that when Bob talked about the permit is what's issued, then it made clear to me that the permit has to go to the owners, right? Because owners are who gets permits. But the condition of giving the permit is there has, and whoever the owner is, is whoever the owner is. That might be a local resident, might not be a local resident, we don't want to get involved in that. It's whoever it is, but the permit goes to the owner. But a condition of getting the permit is that there has to be a locally responsible party. So I think that is a condition of getting the permit. But the permit goes to the owner when a condition of having a locally responsible party is identified. a condition of having a locally responsible party is identified, among other things.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to make the locally responsible party at Westport resident.
No.
They could be from Little Compton or
But it has to be.
Have to be local.
It has to be someone you know is
Right.
respa-, uh, is going to be there.
Just available.
Available, locally available. That's a good phrase.
If you, if you strike all those things out and just say, to, it's granted, the permit is granted to the owner. And then maybe it's just an owner with the locally responsible, legally responsible or something, or legally responsible local representative.
Yeah.
I think.
And that's, that whole category of who owns it.
Yes, goes away.
Yeah, that language maybe could go in the rental permit section because that's where it is triggered. And it doesn't, it, I mean, it's enumerated already, I think, in, as, as Michael pointed out in the nine point eight point four point one E. The owner, she'll provide the contact information for the local responsible party. As part of, it has to be posted there so that the tenants or renters know who called it. The toilet doesn't flush or they don't get water out of the faucet or whatever.
Matt?
Quick question, just going back to the majority.
Could you come up to the, to a microphone so that it can be recorded?
How you doing? Matt Armando, Director of Public Health, Westport. Just a quick question, going back to majority ownership, if it's a trust or an LLC, and we have to prove majority ownership, how does that get done?
You can't do it.
So, okay, so that's not going to, that's going to be taken out there?
It has to be. I mean, there's no, with four hundred entities coming, having somebody in your office trying to figure out who's the owner and how do you prove it?
I don't even think you can legally ask that question anyway. There's only one person, one entity in here that can ask that.
The Assessor's Field Cards has the owner listed. But whether that's an LLC or something, you don't know.
We're just going to leave it as an owner. If they say they're the owner, they're the owner.
All right. Good enough. Is that what Bob nailed the whole process?
Yes. But they have to name the representative.
You keep using four hundred. How do you know four hundred? Is this from the state tax report?
No. We had a hundred and seventy reported to us as a state record. It was the real estate agent who was here who said that she believed there was more like four hundred, so that's.
Oh, okay, so the legal ones are the one hundred and sixty something.
Yeah, right.
How are you going to find the missing ones? This won't do it, will it?
No.
The state could squeeze them somehow, but if they don't report the income and they're not paying the excise,
Well, you, you can always find them if you spend some time online looking for properties from Westport.
To do that?
I don't know.
Or is only the good ones going to get in this master making?
Well, this is, we're trying to do this to help the people like you, not the legitimate.
No, I, I get nothing from everything people take from me. The state takes money, the new excise tax, almost ten percent. I get nothing for that. It's just for money. You want it, say so. And then try to just forget all this.
It's not just for money, it's for your neighbors, like you're responsible.
Who's taking care of the long-term renters and the residents that cause problems? Nobody.
I did explain that earlier, that the town council said that those are accessory. So what we're trying to do here is not just get money by any means. It's to make it so that your rentals are legal.
My rentals aren't legal. I've been doing them in a quarter.
Not the short-term rentals.
Yes, it is. Because the planning board approved my cottages many years ago. As, they didn't say short-term rentals because we didn't use that term.
Right.
But they were rentals and the planning board approved of them where they are, and they're still doing it eighty years later.
So what you could do then is you're saying that you could become what's called non-conforming use. In other words, you can do them as long as you want to.
But that isn't in here at all.
Well, I, I think when they're trying, when they're trying to permit you, that would be, in your instance, is kind of like your cottage. You did that, something that was permitted, you were allowed to do that.
Yes.
And you still will be allowed to do that, with what we're doing for whatever reason.
But that needs to be codified in your bylaw.
Well, that's what the ZBA is. That's a pre-existing.
It's not there anywhere. And you start making exceptions, it's going to be even worse.
We just, we've had some, some serious issues with that.
Yes.
I have some questions also.
Could you, could you come to, could you come to a microphone so that we can find out?
Susan McQueeney. I've lived in town probably thirty years. My family's own cottage since nineteen fifty-nine in the South End. And my family, being a descendant of the plants, was on East Beach for over one hundred years. The last relative just sold and left the area. So my concern is that four hundred seems like a very weak number. Just from my own experiences and observations, there are many rentals in town, and this is going to explode. I would hope that the main focus of the board is to protect the sanctity, the peace, the investments that we have in neighborhood, in community. Don't sell us out. Our neighborhood now has a number of LLCs. How does that happen? Do we have zoning anymore? Or should we all be designated business properties? And, but it's all where it will. You know, it's a huge, huge change. We know we can go to realtors for guidance, and many responsible people do that. But I don't see here, if you rent a room, how many people can pack into that room? We don't know. I've seen grandma and grandpa come down and rent a house, really nice people. And then within a few days, there's tents and trailers on the same property. We've seen weddings. We've seen mad college gatherings. And the police are stretched really thin. We have some great officers. They're well-trained in how to keep a situation calm and orderly. But I just don't see how they're going to cover all of this. I'd like to know how many single-family residences exist in Westport right now? And if you could imagine, each and every resident has a legal right to rent one room. We have many dirt roads, perhaps hundreds of unaccepted dirt roads. And the influx of traffic is unbelievable. The air quality goes right down because the dust flies, Amazon's coming down. It's, it's just incredible what renters bring to the table, and dogs. I've had pit bulls next to me. I've had collies crammed into like a tiny home. All nice people. I've got to say, I get along with just about everyone that's come to my neighborhood. But I'm starting to see the word neighborhood diminish. I also work very long hours. I leave in the dark and I come home in the dark. And I'd like to know that I'm returning to that same safety that I've had all along. Those are my comments. For now, I'm sure there will be more. I'm very concerned about how we define short-term rental because I will not live next to a revolving unit of transient. That's a motel. And if you want to try this experiment, I implore the board to designate it to a business zone and try that first and see how it goes. And discuss with our great police, fire and board of health, how it's coming along. Maybe we should do this in increments. And I hope the town charges a lot of money because this town is worth it. Thank you.
I think you defined really why we went about this ordinance is seeing places like the Cape lose their neighborhoods, lose their character.
What?
Yeah.
A competitor can't get a home because the short-term rental and the greed for that cash
Yeah.
has taken away year-round rentals.
And, and we wanted to try and put something in place to protect it before we lost it. Because we thought if we could protect it, it's a lot easier than trying to get something back after you lose it.
Right.
And so that's what we're trying to do, is to, is to protect just what you described in your comments.
Thank you. And also, I'm a little uncomfortable with the word allowed because it implies that businesses have received permission from the town. And I don't know where they would have gotten that permission, you know, to work in various types of rentals. Maybe it's been overlooked, but I'm not comfortable with the term allowed.
Well, we know that a lot of things have gone on without any problems and without any regulations. But we also know that just assuming they will continue to go on the same way is a very dangerous assumption.
I agree. And as has been noted in the blue, blue papers and other boards and committees, water is an issue in Westport.
Yeah.
And it's difficult to compare Westport to cities and towns that have public water, public sewer, and public transportation. We offer none of that. We do a good job. And the board of health is very good in keeping our water clean and safe. But there are times when, like we've been in drought for a number of years, I think yesterday probably took care of that. But the water table drops. And even long-term residents have to be courteous and fear of each other and share the groundwater. And that's kind of spreading throughout the town. I'm hearing more and more neighborhoods that are concerned about the quantity of their well water.
Thank you, girl.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any more discussion about this section? Want to move on?
Sure. Again, this section for bed and breakfast is just pulled directly from the existing zoning bylaw. So it has not changed. These provisions have not changed. Just for reference, I'll read them off. "The only meal to be provided to guests shall be breakfast and it shall only be served to guests taking lodging at the facility and shall be included in the guest room rate. Guest rooms shall not include individual kitchen facilities and shall have at least one toilet, one bath shower, and one wash basin separate from those required for the single-family residence portion of the dwelling. Not more than forty-five percent of the entire habitable living space shall be allocated for the bed and breakfast establishment purposes. One non-eliminated sign may be erected on the property not to exceed eight square feet in size with no single dimension exceeding four feet." Any comments?
I think you should remove the word establishment because there was originally been focused, homestay establishment distinctions. And we just, I think we're just using bed and breakfast.
Okay.
The, Michael, in item B at the end of that, I'm not sure that it matters too much, but it seems to imply that these bed and breakfasts are all within the existing structure. Because it says, "separate from those required for the single-family portion of the dwelling." And I believe some of these bed and breakfasts could be in a separate outbuilding. In fact, I know they could be like in a detached legal apartment. So I'm not sure whether we just ignore that or just get rid of a portion of the living quarters or something like that, as opposed to the dwelling.
So could somebody also describe what B really means? I mean, does that mean you have to have one bathroom for each guest room? Or one bathroom separate from the owner's facilities that can service one or more bedrooms?
The guest rooms should have their own washing facilities.
Each one. If there's four guest rooms, you have to have another four bathrooms? You can't have a bathroom down the hall?
Would say with this bylaw, it would preclude that.
So for instance, the Pack a Choke Inn couldn't be a bed and breakfast.
Excuse me?
The Pack a Choke Inn couldn't be a bed and breakfast. The Harbor Inn couldn't be a bed and breakfast because neither of those places have separate bathrooms for each guest room.
This is in the current definition.
This is in the current bylaw. Sorry, Jim, I'm not ignoring your question and just reading it.
So to me, I think those are two of the places that are current bed and breakfast places. And they do not qualify. So is there some reason why each guest room would have to have a separate bathroom?
I don't know. Reading it over, it does sound like, "shall have at least one toilet, one bath shower, and one wash basin separate from those required for the single-family residence portion of the dwelling." So you would need, sounds like you would need two different facilities, bathroom facilities. One servicing the bed and breakfast portion of the operation. And second, servicing the single-family portion of the dwelling.
So what you're saying is that.
It could be done.
So I think it would work. Yeah, yeah, it could be.
Is that how the board of health would read this?
I would read it that way because I know those two establishments don't have child bathrooms in every room.
Right.
So either they have the grandfather-in-law in some way, or I think it makes more sense that the living, the living quarters for the owner or the manager would have to be in separate facilities, separate from those who rent.
So if that's the case, could we, if we, if we don't want it to be that way, can we make it clear by saying it's available?
I think the way Michael read it, that those places are okay. As long as they have at least two, two bathrooms, one which is available to renters and the other is the owner's.
Well, you could easily reword this and say, "Guest rooms shall not include individual kitchen facilities and shall have at least, shall have access to at least one toilet, one bathtub, and one wash basin."
Or access or?
Yeah. That would make it clearer in case other people want to.
In item C, I think, remember I said some of these would not necessarily be in the same building. "Not more than forty-five percent of the entire habitable, habitable living space shall be allocated." So I mean, it's kind of implying one building, but it doesn't have to imply that. In habitable living space on a property, but I don't know whether you want to say that or not.
So I think the bylaw, what it's, I think it would preclude an accessory apartment more than likely. more than likely because you're not likely to have multiple bathroom facilities in an accessory apartment, which would be another structure off of the principal use.
I'm not talking about bathroom facilities other than the, what I'm talking about is a detached legal apartment which has bathroom and a kitchen, all of that. So I don't know. It's a, see, the guest room shall not include individual kitchen facilities and so forth. So I'm not certain whether we're leaving out some of these other things. But if you serve breakfast, it's basically like renting a short-term rental but providing breakfast.
Sure.
I mean, you could do it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm unsure whether you want to cover that here or not.
Yeah, I was just saying that I think the way this is written, it would preclude what you're talking about. I think if the board and the committee wanted to have that discussion as to whether allow accessory apartments to accommodate, to be a component of a bed and breakfast, that would be a discussion to be had.
No, I'm not suggesting, well, I don't know what you're suggesting, but I'm not suggesting that you make this a short-term rental, but maybe eliminate the guest room shall not include individual kitchen facilities. If you're already going to require them to give breakfast, does it matter if there's a kitchen facility?
Well, in a bed and breakfast, they only want you to give breakfast. So if you have a kitchen facility, they stay and cook a dinner.
The idea of a bed and breakfast is an owner's private home and they rent out rooms, not mini apartments. If it's mini apartments, then it's a short-term rental and the person has a kitchen facility, they can make their own breakfast.
Right.
Bed and breakfasts typically, you go and they provide a spread, you know, in the morning, and everybody comes whenever they wake up and have their breakfast. That's the way I think of a bed and breakfast. So I think you're starting to mix apples and oranges if you redefine a bed and breakfast to be the same as essentially a short-term rental. So if you want to keep the distinction, I would suggest that bed and breakfast category stay the way it's defined as a, you know, sort of guest room kind of operation.
I think, I think they are different things and I think we should keep them distinct.
Right.
From the border health point of view, would you like have standards or requirements different for a short-term rental that has their own kitchen and so forth and, you know, water and all that versus a bed and breakfast as you were defining it? Is there, are there different standards that border health would have for those two different things separately?
Yes, currently a bed and breakfast has, gets a cottage kitchen license because the owner is preparing food for somebody else. When you're a short-term renter and you bring in your own food, you're cooking for yourself, we don't, just like we don't regulate how you cook your dinner. So, so there is a distinction. When you're serving food to others in like a bed and breakfast guest situation, the way I think of bed and breakfast anyways, when you're serving food to others, there is a permitting process through the board.
Different than the short-term rental would have because...
You're not going to get involved in that.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is you could very well have a short-term rental, but the owner decides to serve breakfast to them. In other words, they have a kitchen and they could make their own.
Well, if they decide to serve breakfast, then they fall into bed and breakfast category and have to meet those requirements.
That's what I was, and we've covered that in here.
We already have bed and breakfast requirements, right? We've not changed them.
Yeah.
The planning board, as far as I know, is not planning on changing those requirements.
No, but one of them says that "shall not include kitchen facilities," you know, so...
Okay, I think we've beaten this one to death.
Yes.
So let's move on to short-term rental, nine point eight point four.
One second. I'm just, I had a different tab open going back to the first one. So a short-term rental is permitted as an accessory use in accordance with section five point one table of use regulations and the following requirements. Residential housing units, the following residential housing units may not be used as short-term rentals. Residential premises designated as affordable or otherwise income restricted, which are subject to affordability covenants or otherwise subject to housing or rental assistance under local, state, or federal programs or law. Dwelling subject to any requirement of local, state, or federal law that prohibits the leasing or subleasing of the unit or use, use the unit as a short-term rental. Commercial units and for-profit events or venues or uses or venues or uses are not permitted in short-term rentals. No signs are allowed identifying the property as available for short-term rental. Short-term rental units or short-term rentals shall be, should be, shall be used for a minimum of two nights.
For an occupant. Rental, something.
Different ones you have?
The owner shall post the following information for all short-term renters, an emergency exit diagram for bedrooms used for rental, contact information for locally available contact. There is discussion as to whether there should be a legal agent or representative who is designated to respond to all emergencies and problems that arise during the rental period, whether from renters, neighbors, or municipal authorities. And that's it for this section.
Okay, so in the first sentence, should it be a short-term rental may be permitted as opposed to is permitted?
In the following residential housing units?
No, nine point eight point four, first, for short-term rental. Because the border health may not permit it.
Well, it's a, it's saying that it's a permitted use pending review.
It is a permitted use. This is not the permit, it's permitted in the zoning.
Right.
That seems what we're trying to get at, right? We're trying to make this legal under the right conditions. So that sentence is what does that?
I think maybe town council will be refining their language anyways, so...
Hopefully.
And I think the last sentence at the bottom here, contact information for locally available representative is important because that's what we're getting at when we say, you know, the permit goes to the owner and we're then identifying that there has to be a locally available representative.
And I think one of the problem, one of the things, one of the reasons was we have ten people showing up to your house.
Oh, yeah.
You need somebody locally that can fix the situation.
But it doesn't say it's a local resident, it just says locally available. And that's the important, locally available representative. So I think you worded that really nicely.
Earlier in this meeting, I said something to the effect that short-term rentals have to be in legal dwelling units. I think that was a question Jerry you had. And that's not actually reflected in here, so I don't know if that's something that should be added. The board thinks it should be considered. Otherwise, you could have short-term rentals in camper or something like that, an RV. So if you say a legal dwelling unit, then it would have to be in an apartment, condo, home, something to that effect.
Yeah, we have, we have it now, so I'm sure they're going to stay around.
I think that is, that is a good idea. I don't know where that gets inserted, but... Oh, maybe it's in the sentence, in the subsection nine eight four one.
Right.
The following legal residential housing units.
Oh, no, it's not there.
No, they're not there. That's what's not allowed, right?
Well, you do a bullet right before that saying they're permitted in legal housing units. And then the second bullet is they're not permitted in, you know, just as you worded it there.
And there was a lot of discussion, Jim, in, in the committee meetings about the commercial meetings and not-for-profit menus. So, you know, this idea that you see advertisements for, you know, rent this place for bachelor parties and all that kind of stuff. And, and people charge for that, you know, come, you know, get a band and all that kind of stuff. But then there was a lot of discussion about birthday parties, weddings. I mean, could, could someone, you know, rent a place for a week? And they have the rehearsal party there and they have a wedding and they set up a tent and all that kind of stuff. Or, you know, birthday or any of that, and that happens.
That's what they do.
But it happens a lot in private residences. Do we want to, do we want to be silent about that or do we want to say something about that?
I think one difference between an owner hosting a wedding for their son or daughter is the neighbors know the owner.
Yep.
There's this neighborly relationship.
Yep.
When it's a short-term renter who comes in, has no connection with the neighborhood, and they host a wedding and all the cars are parked on the street and then, yes, there's a local contact that, for the renter, but the neighbor who says that, they would then have to call the police, I guess. It just, so there may be a reason to restrict that kind of activity in a short-term rental because it's not the same as in, you know, people make the argument, well, neighbors, you know, people who are on their own property can do it, but there, there is, I think, a neighbor quality, neighborhood quality distinction between those two types of categories of the same event, but in a short-term rental versus in a private property. So the planning board might want to think about addressing that explicitly.
I mean, the parking space should, we have parking regulations or regulations, you know, that kind of body.
It's so, it's so quick. I mean, it happens all of a sudden, they show up at six thirty and they're there until one o'clock in the morning and then they leave. It's hardly time for anybody to get, get somebody there to, it's actually too late because you got all those people there where they're going to go.
Right now on Facebook, there's an ad for property in Westport for thirty-five people to have whatever kind of function or movies or whatever you want. It does not appear to be an overnight. It just, you can tell somebody has refinished their basement level into a function hall and it's, it's on Facebook right now.
That's a business that should be regulated.
Yeah. Well, actually, I think it is legal. I think, I think it's in a business zone and I think it'd be legal, but I don't know what kind of, you know, other restrictions like fire codes and things like that. But anyway, passing that off to you, it does exist.
The short-term rental requirements have a requirement of two nights for the stay, so that could address some of those types of uses.
Right.
Weddings and things like that may have folks staying a little bit longer, so perhaps not, but the more fly-by-night events, I think that would get addressed by this.
So you need to put in somewhere that this is for a legal residential property?
Yeah, these short-term rentals are permitted in legal dwelling units.
Yeah. We good?
I think we're good.
One more section here, and that's the violation provisions. This is really just a boilerplate section.
Does that need to have another number on the, an extended number because it just says nine point eight four, which is the same thing that is on the previous page? But should it be nine point eight four point two?
Five. Should be, should be, yeah.
Something like that.
Yep. Should be nine point eight point five.
What?
It's going to be nine point eight point five.
Yeah, but where's the five coming? Okay, all right, I see it's here.
So that's short-term rental, so violation provisions is for the whole.
Oh, I see.
And change this forward to a five.
Okay.
For the whole thing?
Well, if there are no other closing comments, we can close out the, or adjourn the short-term rental committee meeting.
One more comment. You may want to look at the bed and breakfast definition in your current zoning bylaw. DOR makes the distinction between bed and breakfast establishment and bed and breakfast homestay. One of them charges the excess, the room tax, and one of them doesn't have to based on size and others. So if you're, if we're regulating bed and breakfast as a whole, you might want to sort of generic summarize that definition a bit.
So bed and breakfast homestay and bed and breakfast establishment.
I can give you the, I found it in the DOR stuff when I was researching this. I can give you the...
Would those definitions, would that impact anything in section nine point eight point three? That, just the general bed and breakfast requirements?
The reason I'm saying that is because the distinction between whether they need a DOR permit or not can be handled in the permitting process, you know? It doesn't have to be handled here, but I think not further along the bylaw, it would have any impact.
So in, add to section three point oh definitions, in the middle of that paragraph, it says "a short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, and condominium." I thought you couldn't make a short-term rental out of a rented space, which would be an apartment.
I think what this is referring to is, and maybe we need to tighten up this language a little bit, but is more for, let's say someone owns a duplex or someone owns a multi-unit accessory facility. Then you could have one unit in there or multiple units. If you're the owner, you can use it as a short-term rental.
But if you live in an apartment, you're not the owner.
Right, but the owner of that facility, that entire dwelling could, you create a short-term rental in that. So if it's...
But if it isn't, if it isn't rented, is it an apartment?
Well, I think that's where the language might need to be tightened up during the distinction between it being an apartment or a multi-unit house.
Right.
On nine point eight point five, Michael, violation provisions, is it intentional that it starts out with violations of this regulation with a capital R? with a capital R will be subject to perences, and then any owner who fails to comply with any provision of these regulations with an S? Is that purposeful or should we make that consistent?
Shouldn't be a reference to a bylaw? This is not a regulation.
Yeah, well, but see that, what I'm saying...
Two different things.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. But what's this regulation versus these regulations? It's all in the same paragraph.
So, this, this bylaw in both places?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it should be there.
It's part of a whole bylaw, isn't it?
It should be this section, I think, because...
I think it just needs to be addressed anyway.
Yeah, because it isn't a regulation because you're putting it into, into the bylaw.
Right.
But it's not a bylaw in and of itself. It's a section of the bylaw.
Part of the whole zoning bylaw.
So, it could be amended to read violations of this bylaw, so on and so forth.
No, not this bylaw. This, this section of the zoning bylaw.
Anyway, that works.
But then it still goes on to say provision, comply with provision of these regulations. So, I'm not sure the distinction between the section and deregulations.
I think, I think it should be this section in both cases.
All right, great. Or you could even state of this, of 9 point, section 9.8. We also have a letter from Joseph Inglesby talking about a couple of the things that he is concerned about. One of which is adequate fencing within village areas or dense areas where houses are set close to one another. He would like to see a zoning amendment to require six-foot fencing around the parking and utility areas.
Apparently, from what I've heard, in their neighborhood, they've got a lot of troubles with short-term rentals.
He lives up at the head of Westport?
Yeah, that's right on the, on the ridge, on the west side of the river.
Was that like on the?
He, he had a couple duplexes. What's that, please?
Next to the historical commission?
Yeah, between the Bell School and, and Joe's property. Joe's on the corner. And, and they've had quite a bit of, and I believe they might have even come to our meeting, somebody from there. But anyway, I just anecdotally, I've heard lots of issues. And he's addressing quite a few more in here that I haven't heard of.
Yeah, so, we should put that up file.
Good fences make good neighbors.
Yeah.
Camper vans.
That's a horse trailer. I think. Looks like it.
If fencing were to be required, I would suggest that it's broadened to screening more generally. You can use vegetation for screening purposes and not just fencing.
I would suggest that fencing or screen be a requirement of short-term rentals.
You could say may be required, but then who's gonna decide? Okay, I think we're done with this.
You want a motion to return?
No, no, we're not done yet.
No, this committee?
Yes, this section, please.
This section, do you want?
No, the short-term rental committee has to make that motion, so.
I, I move that we adjourn the short-term rental committee meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony Andrew.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, next up, I think. Would be the zoning amendments that we're proposing?
Yeah, the first one, first up is section 9.1, assisted and independent living facilities. This is to consider a definition for congregate living. What I have suggested to the board is a shared living environment that combines housing and supportive services where residents share one or more facilities, including kitchens, dining areas, and bathroom facilities. Each resident must have their own bedroom. And then to revise the purpose section of this bylaw to include the independent living facilities. They offer congregate living arrangements and also recreation facilities for persons over the age of 55.
Don't we need to add something like dining facilities?
So, under, there would be a definition that would include that residents would share facilities like kitchens, dining areas, and bathroom facilities.
I'm not sure that that's hitting the right note. That they don't share them, they have provided them. I mean, it sounds like you could have an independent living facility with a big shared kitchen. And that isn't really the, at least on my thought of what a, you know, health is. It would be something that is provided to the residents.
So, what would that look like?
You've got it a little bit in the supportive services. So, where the supportive services can include kitchens, dining areas. Is that what you're getting at, Jim?
No, you, 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 my understanding is you don't like the word "share."
You want, it shouldn't be "shared." It should be where where common facilities are provided. Is it facilities? If you're providing meals? It's not facilities. It's...
But a dining room is a facility.
Right.
But their, their meals are being provided. It's not that, hey, here's a kitchen and a dining area. Go make your own meal.
Who wants to make it tonight?
Yeah.
Right.
It's not that. It's you're getting a meal provided to you. And...
The ones that I've seen, they provide at least two meals a day.
Yep.
And I think we need to say that. It would, it would make it much simpler in our process and our meetings that people understood what this means. If you need, you're not gonna do it with 30 units. You're gonna have to have 100 units, 120, 150 to be able to, to have the cost benefit, to be able to provide the meals at a reasonable price. You can say that they're provided one or more facilities if you want to go with some of the wording. Including dining areas, social meeting areas.
Recreation.
Recreation facilities, meeting areas. And where the residents are provided two meals minimum per day.
And keep the, each resident must have their own bedroom. And if each resident must have their own bedroom or bathroom, so.
So, how about a new sentence saying that congregate living facilities provide facilities? Okay, that's repetitive, but we can, we can deal with that. Including but not limited to recreation areas or common, common recreation areas, common dining areas?
Dining, dining area.
So, there are some examples. What are, what are some of the additional examples?
Meeting.
Meeting areas.
Meeting areas.
Library or multimedia room.
So, we have some examples in there that then, I think that gives a good indication.
Yeah.
What the expectations are, but it's including, not limited to. So, we're not saying it's all of these things and...
Yeah.
I would, I would avoid numbers or anything like that because we certainly would like, if we crack this, we'd certainly like the, the old high school to qualify.
But, you know, congregate living can, can refer to a variety of ways of, of doing that. It could be individual bedrooms where everything else is common except for the bathroom facilities. It could be studios and one-bedrooms with limited kitchen facilities in each one, but still giving the option of minimum of two meals a day. And and it's, it's, it has to be run by a group that has social services as their main agenda item, meaning that they can help people get around, they can help people go shopping somewhere, they can help people with other elderly life issues, including access to, to a medical person who might be online.
Would this... Okay, so I just jotted something down. Congregate living would be a shared living environment that combines housing and supportive services where residents share one or more facilities, including kitchens, dining areas, and bathroom facilities. Congregate living includes facilities like common recreation, dining areas, meeting areas, multimedia, library room, and they provide supportive services like meals, transportation, access to healthcare. Well, fine tune it, but does that kind of get at?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're going down the right...
What about, like, the border health requirements on a facility like this? What's the statement on something like that? Because, I mean, have you, have you looked into Dartmouth and seen if they have assisted living? Only reason I'm saying this is coming down Old Westport Road, where Bean Road is, there's a facility like this there. And one of the things with that facility is, and a developer extended the sewer in Dartmouth for the facility. And the facility has different levels of assisted and independent living with nursing staff, almost like part of its nursing home, part of its assisted, assisted living, and transitions from independent living all the way up to the...
Yeah, I'm not sure it has independent living. I think it has assisted and, and nursing care. Like Sakana or, it used to be called Sakana, it's called something else. Has like four different levels. They have independent living, they have memory area, they have nursing home, and they have assisted living. Laurel Beach is a perfect example of, over in the east Providence or east side of Providence. Have you been there? It's, it's got physical rehab place, it's got nursing home, it's got assisted living, and it's got independent living. And I know some people in the harbor who spend their winters there and come back to their summer house. So, it's, my parents were in one that had just independent living and nursing home care. And it provided all the things I was talking about. Plus, it had an indoor pool. It had a craft room. It had a billiard room. It had a bar that you could go to before dinner. And it had waitstaff there every night and lunch. And if you needed breakfast, they would bring it to your apartment. But the, the people who built it, not the people who run it, there's a different route that they hired to run it. And they, all the hallways were internal so that they were, it looked like Paul River, like triple-deckers, but they're all connected. And they had inside hallways. And every morning, they would have this little flip thing on your door. Somebody at night would go and flip this thing on your door. And if you hadn't opened your door by 12:00 noon, they'd come and find out if you're okay because they could tell that the flip thing hadn't fallen down. So, and, but they didn't have assisted living, so they had health aides that you could hire or you could hire your own. But I, I think that it might be good, Michael, to, to contact a couple of these places and see what they, how they define what they do.
I think with what you've given Michael with that a good kind of definition.
So, the, this definition is more or less taken from the Mass Health and Social Services definition for congregate living?
There's, there's sort of two meanings for congregate living. So, congregate living is what I could see the high school become, which is you have your own bedroom and everything else is common. So that you, you go out and you have lunch, dinner, breakfast in the cafeteria. You go out to the library, read or whatever you're gonna do, but you just have a bedroom. It could be a big bedroom with a seating area, but it's just a bedroom.
Manny, to answer your question, Dartmouth does have, I'll read you their definition. They call it senior residential services, which includes residential facilities or developments which includes residential facilities or developments that are occupied primarily by persons 55 years or older, excluding spouses, children. Senior residential services are defined in this bylaw. Currently encompass over 55 independent living nursing homes, assisted living and adult daycare facilities, and can offer the full range of nursing care from total assistance to independent living. Such residential facilities may provide shared food preparation services or independent food preparation areas. In addition, common recreational laundry, social, medical, and service facilities may be provided for the exclusive use of residents. I think I'll probably borrow some of that.
Michael, I thought when Jim was describing this facility in Providence, you know, if, if you or Amy could, you know, call up the, we have, we have a facility that is something we would like to have. What, what does the Providence zoning say about that? And then just look at this other thing and say, okay, well, this produced something we like. What did the word say? And if there's, if, if another recommendation or, you know, because I know it's I think either, I think it's probably in Tibbetson, there's a facility just south of the Voluble Line that's looks out over the Sakona River.
Right, it's, it's called, it was called Sakona Bay. I don't know what it's called now.
And you could just, just look at the, you know, what does, what does Tibbetson zoning say about that?
All right.
Moving on?
Yes.
Excuse me. Did you address the second part of that, the over 55? You, 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 I assume the re-
Oh, yeah.
Recreational facility, I think you got that. And is that only meant for the recreational facilities? Is that only meant for those over 55? Or does that also include the congregant stuff in the first? For example, would that be part of supportive services?
It would be meant for all of the residents in the facility.
Because I'm thinking beyond recreation as we think of recreation, you know, like educational programs, things like that. But what I particularly want to address is the age 55. We have that now, age 55 in there?
Well, we have it in the ILF. Yes, yes.
It's in the original.
Okay, and I, we have never built one.
Here we have.
Which one?
Oak Ridge.
Okay, yeah, but that didn't come under the over 55. That came in under-
It was independent.
It came in, it came under the ILF provisions.
Okay, my question is, there's no, there's no agency that, that monitors the 55? What I'm getting at is, is over 55 versus age restricted, I guess I'll, I'll use that terminology. When I was the director of the Housing Authority in town, we had, that had to be 62 or something like that. But we also had handicap units and we had to take young people. And we actually did have young families, 25 years old with severe medical issues. And that person married, they had a baby that also had medical issues, and then they had another baby, and it was chaos in that building, okay? So my point I'm getting at is, is the age 55 really age 55? Or the second example I'll give is someone who was, say, over 55, but married someone who is not 55. How do we handle that, George? Why do we care?
At the moment, I don't care, but I think we do need to care. But I'm not sure we can care enough. We don't have enough to do between now and town meeting, but I think it's something that we need to address. If we get one of these things again in front of us, we need to button that down.
I'm just bringing it up as an issue that, that actually happens in our situation.
It's, it's an issue that's always, always related to our age restrictive unit. And my understanding in Massachusetts is that you couldn't age restrict. You couldn't age restrict units. But I think you can with an ILF, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I, I, this is, that's the, that's the entry threshold.
Right.
Are you selling to people that are over 55? Then, then it qualifies, you know, as an independent living facility. If, if you're, if you're selling to 30 year olds with handicaps, it's not an independent living facility.
Amy, did you have a comment about this?
I'm sorry, please.
Sorry, Amy's here and she just turned her screen on. You're muted.
Hey, no, she's here.
Or is this not on?
Not saying much.
Are you there? No.
Our speaker is on.
Yeah, it's your microphone.
No, it's sign language.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry. If you message me, I can read it.
Jerry, I think it's something that we need to address, but we were really trying to address the definition for, for congregant living so that we can move forward with that. And, but we have a lot more to do and we only have half an hour left, so.
That's why I just wanted to lay out real cases.
So, Michael, which one do you want to do next?
Intensity regulation.
Yeah, we can move on to the intensity regulations. If that's what is next on here. Yep.
Okay.
This was brought up because we have subdivision proposals that result in irregularly shaped lots, some pretty significantly so. And in an attempt to bring some of those proposals into more of a regular subdivision arrangement with more regular lots, there are a couple of solutions the board could consider. One would be regulating, regulating the lot corner angle. So where the side lot line intersects the road frontage line, there could be a standard plus or minus 90 degrees to regulate that. So that way you don't have circumstances where in order to try to get the frontage, you have, you know, someone coming in to the road frontage at a 15 degree angle.
So that says within 20 degrees of perpendicular.
Yeah.
So that's just an, an example. Yeah, so 20 degrees is, you know, we can do 10 degrees, but yeah, within.
Yeah, so 70 degrees. One more of the.
70 to 110 would be the range.
Very wacky lots, particularly at the end of roads with a cul-de-sac turnaround in which the angle is almost zero degrees. It's just coming out flat against the curb.
Right.
Almost tangential. And then they, and then they cove all this little silver.
I'd like to decide. So what's the next item?
The next one is to mod, so we have the, it's kind of like, I like to call it the circle test. And so we have this standard where if the, you can draw a circle of 50 foot in width and you can run that circle to the road, the road front, or the, the front line.
Frontage.
Yeah. It, that will, that will meet that, that standard. And so I think if we widen that minimum lot width, you can cut down on some of these lots where it's really just being used as a small passageway to convey access. And I think one of the concerns with that is that when you have these, you don't have a regular provision of services and addressing. Can be confusing to get emergency services out to.
So it's like a side yard requirement almost.
Right. So instead of having a, a small, you know, 50 foot standard, you can require a percentage of whatever the frontage requirement is of 150 feet. So you could do 80% of 150. You could do 80% of, what I don't offhand what the standard would be for flexible frontage. But similar sort of things. So that way you're ensuring that leading to the building line, it's, you're having a wider entrance to that lot.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see any reason why, you know, given, we have to remember when you do this, this is, this is the, you know, the guy who invents a new mousetrap. He catches more mice, but he gets smarter survivors. And so the first, the first thing that will happen is that every guy with a surveying degree is gonna get on his geometry books and say, okay, 150, I can, I can curb here and I can, no, it's just this endless struggle of everyone believes the only way to create value is to make the maximum number of lots you can squeeze into a place, which has nothing to do with the quality of what you're building or any of that stuff. And, and they even admit it. Yeah, I know it's ugly, but it's complacent law and you have to sign it. You know, I know it's, this is a terrible way to build, but, you know.
You allow me to do it, I'm gonna do it.
People will buy anything, you know. So I think, I think one of the antidotes to that is, oh, it's 150 feet all the way to the, to the building setback.
Yeah, and that could, that could settle that issue. I think one thing that would need to be included is a building envelope on the subdivision plan because the building setback line is 25 feet. But where the building is going to be sited may not be even close to where that setback line is. As we've seen in a recent subdivision proposal.
We get, we get them, you know, 100 feet, 300 street away.
Right. So you'd have to run it all the way back to where the house is. So that's, you know, the one addition to that that I would, I would recommend including. And then.
So what do you do on flexible frontage?
That would have.
Is it 70 feet, is it 70 feet all the way to the house? Or does it have to be wider where the house is? Because 70 feet is pretty small.
So it'd be whatever that frontage stand. So I guess you could carve out a different regulation for the flexible frontage. But as we're talking about it now, it would just default to whatever that frontage would be, would have to be carried all the way back to the building front line.
Because the whole idea of flexible frontage was not to make 70 foot wide lots, but have 70 foot frontage to a big area in the map. But.
So it could be for a standard subdivision, this is what you. For a flexible frontage, they would, this would not apply.
Refer to the flexible frontage.
Right.
I mean, we need, so you got, you got access requirements and frontage requirements. So like, you know, you got, so you're gonna create a new road, you gotta, you need 50 foot for the layout. So I, I mean, now we're gonna like restrict. If you have a frontage and you're gonna access a rear portion of your lot, and now you're gonna restrict your frontage. So say you come in, you got a lot, you got, you got your 150 foot frontage. And you're only, you're gonna cross through a wetland. So your, your access, you know, in the, in the lot is confirmed because of the wetland and so forth. But you get five acres of open in the back. And now you're gonna, you're gonna come through the 50 foot. Like right now, if you only had 50 foot, you'd get through there, but now if you're gonna get 80, you're not gonna, you're gonna kill a lot like that.
Well, you don't need to build, you don't need a 150 feet of buildable, you just need 150 feet of land.
There's also a waiver provision in this section. And I think the purpose of this is to say that the default is that you have to, you know, run whatever that frontage is. Then if there are other unique circumstances, environmental, topographic, whatever, then you can ask for a waiver and the planning board makes that call if it's appropriate in that circumstance.
But all the land doesn't have to be buildable, it just has to be your land.
Yeah, it could be the wet. Well, I mean, so, so you got some, some lots too, like you have the frontage. And then the, the, you got access to the land in the back, but you don't have frontage, you only have 100 foot. And you're gonna use your legal frontage on the street. Run a different street because it's a large parcel and you only have 100 feet. You're coming in the back way. So, I mean, it might make it so, it still won't make really much of a difference. I know, I know the geometry exercise we see many times.
And the lots are lollywops, you know, long little.
You got people's, the property lines of the lot on the side of you in front of the other house, you know, and they don't even, if they decide to fence it, it's looking pretty odd, you know.
So I think, I think the issue then would be, is it something that is going to make people, if they're gonna have that kind of requirement, instead of 150 foot of frontage on this lot and 150 on this lot, you're gonna put a subdivision road in so that they can get frontage because it opens up in the back, and they're gonna make more lots than less. So how do you, well, there's still the flexible frontage. Deal with that. Should it be the same frontage width all the way to the, to the building envelope or to the front of the house?
Yeah, it's too, it's, Michael made a good point. It's too, it's too short. I think if, I, I think, you know, we, we should really think about a lot width, a minimum lot width of 100 feet to a lot depth of 200 feet. And then, so that's, you, you sort of get, you, you get half of the required, you're gonna have a 60,000 square foot lot. Half of the lot, the front half of the lot is in regular shape. And they, they can play with whatever they want, the geometry in the rear. Now you've got, you know, and what we, and we, we don't want to force bigger frontage because that just gets us more roads. And, you know, we don't, we don't want to extend road, road length. But, and, and then people that come with the oddball lots, they can come for a special permit for flexible frontage. And they're giving up lots. And by, and they get, in exchange, they get, if they're big enough, they could get down to 50 feet, right?
So the, making a, say, 150 foot frontage or 200 foot frontage, you think that's gonna make, I mean, I think that's more of a deterrent, more of a reason for why they're gonna wanna go to flexible frontage because of the road cost, that extra 50 foot.
Yeah, I would not, I would not recommend that we make minimum frontage 200.
On an A and R plan.
Well, we've seen a lot of A and Rs, we, you know, we, if we.
And that's one of the driveways, you know, we start stacking driveways all the way down in the A and R. I, I don't think in a, in a regular subdivision where like in an A and R plan, it might be something to consider.
Yeah, what would happen if we did that? And then made, uh, made the subdivision rules and regulations more flexible than, than the standard two hundred foot long by special permit so that we can get what we want instead of get what makes sense for the property instead of some geometry gun. I think that CERF is finally done with their study of what's happened with all the open space residential plans in the whole area. And with some recommendations on, on where people might go because they failed everywhere.
Yeah, as soon as you make it, no one, no one opts for anything that's, isn't as a right, isn't, you know, we, we've got in the subdivision control law, you know, plans that comply shall be approved. And everyone just rests on that. No one, no one takes the risk of, there's a, you know, we, we're trying to, we're trying to get more creative design, more flexible design by a special permit. As soon as you say special permit, they don't wanna do it.
Right. So the other alternative is to make regular subdivision by special permit in open space by, by rights.
That's something that I would be supportive of, perhaps for a later date to, to work that out. But we initially brought this up was how can we make a small fix to the intensity section to get the irregular lot arrangements on, a little bit under control.
Something like a hundred, you know, the lot width should be a hundred and fifty feet to a lot depth of two hundred feet. That's easy to understand and fits, it, it, it is, it takes an intermediate correct spot. Because I, just, it, it'll be mind boggling for us. And then the town meeting will just be scratching their heads like, who the hell elected these guys? You know, to, to, you know, to craft this, a special permit for, you know, the as of right flexible and special permit. The as of right flexible will be a nightmare to create.
So is the one fifty by two hundred the right metric? Should it be one fifty by one fifty? One twenty five?
It just, I just, I just, just.
Paul, you're ready again.
Yeah, it's just, it just said, okay, we got sixty thousand square foot lots. How about if we make the front half of them quite regular in shape?
Exactly.
So two hundred.
It's like a, like a mullet, business in the front, party in the back.
That's right.
I, I think that works. I, that's thirty thousand square feet, right?
Yeah, that's, that's half the required lot. So, you know, at least it's gonna, you know, where people are likely to build, it'll look like, matter of fact, if you make the lot regular, that's the way they will build. The builders don't wanna build more driveways than they have to. They're, they're only building these long driveways because we let them get wacky looking lots.
Right. Okay, I think that sounds promising.
And the last item on here is, you, you could use a lot geometry formula, but if you're not concerned with the way that the lot looks at the rear, this, this one can be missed because it's just forgetting under control the way, you know, the number of jobs that a lot takes in the end back. If you're fine with.
I've struggled with all kinds of regularity factors.
Right.
The, you know, the square root of the size divided by the area of the.
Well, this is the, the simplest version of the, what do you wanna call it? The lot shape factor. This is the simplest one. Okay, well, if that's not a major concern, then we really don't discuss it.
And I, and I think that's what we're gonna need to do to get the town meeting in line. Like, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta write a task for us, you know.
Oh, it's gonna be a simple town meeting.
Yeah. I think they are.
Well, speaking of, that's, what we have next is, uh, Route Six zoning revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to.
We do have another meeting in here at seven. No? I thought Chris said that there was a meeting.
What, today?
Yeah, I'm here.
We can order dinner in.
So.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
Same to you.
You too.
Same to you.
See you on, uh, what is it, tonight?
Are you driving to Florida?
Yeah, start tomorrow morning. I don't think we'll make it to Florida tomorrow, but.
I was, uh, I was in Charleston for a long weekend. We, we flew back Sunday at nine. And the high tide was at eleven. And, and our hotel is right in, if you know Charleston.
Yeah.
Better meeting and, and, and market, so with Big Long Market is. There was two feet of water in the market.
Really?
We would have had to weigh, I think the first floor of the plant is in, it was probably just out of the water. But the courtyards and the outside dining and all of that, two feet of water would inundate it. All the, all of the marketplace was inundated. I saw the photos and I said, you know, we got into an Uber and it was raining, we got four inches. And it was raining like crazy. But we got in the plane, very bumpy ride out there. I mean, really bumpy. And, uh, no, no food service, no, nothing. You know, just everyone stays strapped up. And then, uh, when I, when we finally saw the photographs of where we were walking around on Saturday and, you know, and, you know, cars were floating, there was two, two to three feet of water everywhere.
Well, I've heard that airplanes are the safest way to fly.
Yes.
So you're probably still pretty good. See you later.
Have a great holiday.
Well, that's Chairman.
Okay, let's go with lives and technology.
Get started and when we get kicked out, we get. So we're going to rename the science and technology district to the science and technology mixed use overlay district. Working title, might be a little bit less worried to name it the mixed use science and technology overlay district. But regardless, this will, um, this new, or this amended zoning overlay di, this amended overlay district would allow multi-unit housing. That's kind of the impetus for this. We require map amendments and corresponding description amendments in the zoning bylaw. And see up here, it's outlined in, in the hatched red. And in the area in green, it's been suggested to expand this district across.
Boardman Street.
Over to Boardman Street.
So this would, this would be between Sanford and Boardman, we would extend the district?
Yes, between Sanford and Boardman.
Does, does the business district, I may have said, is the science and technology district run by Route Six or does it run by the business district?
It runs over top of.
Yeah.
The business district on Route Six.
Right, on the south side.
On the south side.
Yep. So the overlay lays over the, over the business district.
Which could allow access to the overlay.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a, that's a good thing.
All right, I'm not going to read all of this since it's just us. And this, this section is really just a series of text amendments to allow multi-unit housing. It's not a whole new section. So in spirit of that, the new science, technology, mixed use overlay district would have an amended purpose section to promote a work, or excuse me, promote a live-work mixed use environment that offers employment and housing opportunities. And along those same lines, promote the creation of housing in proximity to services and employment opportunities. And then item J would be amended to protect adjacent residential property values through effective and year-round screening and buffering, deleting of the commercial uses from. And so it would be year-round screening and buffering to the, it probably should be adjacent residential uses. Okay, so in order to, so Russ Berg, our consultant who helped draft these, changed a couple of the allowed uses in, in this bylaw. Obviously, multifamily uses is called out in here. Three are more dwelling units.
Yep.
And then he did some consolidation of like uses or uses that could be covered under.
That would be conservation.
Yeah, that'd be conservation. That, that could be covered under a larger category. And so the software and communication service uses, telemarketing and telephone-based uses, that could all be covered under data center use. So just to simplify things, um, there's a, there's a data center use carved out in here. Same as, um, calling out light manufacturing. This is considered to be the same as, as the light industry. So that's consolidated as well. Added into here is warehouse distribution and fulfillment centers. So things like Amazon, um, that have become very popular. Probably wasn't anticipated when this was drafted. So that's now included in this district.
I just saw an article in the Wall Street Journal that said warehouse distribution facilities, uh, the, the applications for building these have dropped seventy percent in the last year. So because of interest rates. So.
Then next is allowing mixed uses in this district. So that would replace N. And then there is a provision at the bottom of this slide that is essentially allowing the planning board some discrepancy with like uses that may or may, that may not be listed, um, in this text. So if the board found that a like use that's not specifically called out in this text, you know, would not be detrimental to the surrounding area. It could, the board could find it to be permitted. Then the lot requirements for the district. Instead of ten acres, the minimum lot size would be five acres, fifty percent of which would have to be upland. Minimum lot frontage would be adjusted to a hundred feet instead of fifty feet. The maximum residential density would be five dwelling units per acre. The minimum front setback would be twenty-five feet instead of forty. The minimum side yard setback would be twenty-five feet instead of fifty, except if it's abutting a non-science, technology, mixed use overlay district residential use, in which case it would be a one hundred foot setback. Same sort of situation with the minimum rear setback. Instead of a fifty foot setback, it would be thirty. And if abutting one of those residential uses, it would be a hundred feet instead of one hundred and fifty. The maximum lot coverage would be increased from fifty percent to sixty-five percent. Maximum. There's a, th- this was a correction in here. So before it used to say that heights may be increased by one story or fifteen feet for every additional two hundred feet, which is quite a bit. So reduced to twenty, which is a lot more reasonable. And as stated, the upland requirement is fifty percent.
Just in those lot requirements, I think the, the residential density is way too low. I mean, that's, that's almost low-density town, townhouses. And I, I think that should be in the twelve to fifteen, you know, units an acre.
That has been discussed. Russ thought that that might be a bit ambitious at town meeting to ask for fifteen dwelling units per acre.
I think for this section, no. I, I agree with Bob. But as we move further down to the next section, we need to be very cautious.
What section is that?
Like when we start getting to like Railroad Park and Westport Factory.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all that stuff. Which I, I think, and again, we wanna try to preserve our residential affordable housing in that area without turning all those little fifty foot lots into lots.
Yeah.
So we might wanna think like, uh, thirty thousand square foot, say in a Seward district. Once you get Seward, you can do a thirty thousand square foot lot. Because right now those lots, they're, they're actually grandfathered if you can get a septic on them. That's what's keeping them from being developed, is fifty foot lots.
How big are they?
Fifty foot wide by a seventy feet, hundred feet. So it would be a.
Five thousand square foot.
You know, and it's.
They're like city lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you don't wanna have ten thousand square foot. I think we, if we could do a thirty thousand, it would preserve what neighborhoods are. And it could prevent, you know, like the other, my other concern was, was, you know, like where it's five hundred foot deep, which is actually my neighborhood. And, and, you know, Walgreens coming and buying up that piece right there, we lose the residential stock that we have in the front and now the stock in the back. So if we can, if we can create something where those people who now could only develop a sixty thousand square foot lot, or a three bedroom, we could do a three bedroom on a thirty thousand square foot lot.
And I think you're talking about the next.
Right, the next section.
I, we gotta want to go through here, so I understand.
Yep.
But I think we need to focus on the stock. But I think we need to focus on the stock.
Yeah, and, and I think that would be a, like, what we are trying to attempt up there would be what Bob suggested.
So what's the number?
Oh, for maximum residential density? I mean, fifteen dwelling units per acre, and this is something that we discussed at the onset of this project, that gets us in line with the adjacent community MBTA requirements.
And Russ has pushed back so much, and I was trying to get that in, he said that it's gonna be a back and forth with DCD, uh, is this, is this the right way, the right place to do it, and is it the right density and everything?
But if you look at Edgewater, how many units are that, you know, and we also have that developer going in for the yellow freight, so...
I think we need, so, for, for that, for Edgewater expansion, let's say, I think we need to be accommodating to the density that he wants, and whether it's ten, twelve, fifteen per acre, so that we can have some impact in what goes on, instead of getting it forty big and have no impact, so... And plus, it's better for him, it's only ten percent or fifteen percent affordable versus twenty-five.
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
I, I would, you know, you're likely to get someone, at, at five, you're not gonna get someone to undertake multifamily housing here.
It's not gonna be worth the interest cost.
It is, it'll be worth it. And, and I, and I think all of this is, it's, I, I think it's, it's fifteen with public water and sewer.
Right.
It's not, it's not, oh yeah, you can, you get fifteen, you're gonna build somebody, a big septic system.
Right.
I think we're about to be kicked out.
So we got one last item, let's, I wanna wrap, wrap this one up, so, um... In the Performance Standard section, lists off all these different standards for stormwater, and it summarizes it by saying, uh, the development must comply with the most recent MAS DEP stormwater standards. Then for lighting, there's a provision to just make sure that the lighting is in accordance with dark sky standards. And then in buffer areas, providing the planning board discretion to reduce buffer areas if the planning board determines that it won't have an undue impact on adjacent uses.
So with, where are you talking about the stormwater regulations?
That's skipping ahead to Performance Standard B in here.
B. Don't we, don't we wanna go with your structures?
Interior infrastructure.
Yep.
Don't we wanna go with the Tana Westport's standards, which in some cases are more stringent than the state requirements?
You could say in accordance with the MAS DEP standards or Tana Westport standards, whichever is more restrictive.
I'd have to, have to read them again. Okay, I think we have to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.